Ends down with my sister-in-law, probably down in Harpswell, where, you know, one of the meetings where I was broadcasting from, I think. But, uh, yeah, it's just the way, the way it is, so.
All right, we are, uh, we're up and running and recording now, so.
Well, there we go. I don't, I don't need to tell the, tell the time of Thanksgiving plans, but I will, too late. I will. So I guess welcome everybody this, uh, to the planning board meeting Wednesday, November eighteenth, uh, two thousand twenty for our latest, uh, online meeting. Uh, first up is a roll call. Tonight, we, I see the, the games all here. Lisa Buck, John Beckett, uh, Mike Costello, Judd McIntosh, Krista Schwintzer, myself, Phil Ruck, and we've got Dave Thompson with us as well. Can I have a motion, uh, next up for acceptance of the agenda?
I move, we accept the agenda.
All right. So we had Krista with the motion and who was the second?
Lisa.
All right, Lisa. Quick, quick on the trigger there. Uh, very good. Any, uh, comments, additions? It's a pretty, pretty light one this evening. All right, uh, all those and I guess actually we can't do, uh, Jessica, could you take, take the role, please?
Yeah, give me just one sec. You're moving really fast for me tonight. All right. So for the approval of the agenda, Dave Thompson?
Here.
Lisa Buck?
Yes.
Phil Ruck, error of rhymes.
Yes.
Okay. John Beckett?
Yes.
Judd McIntosh?
Approved.
Michael Costello?
Yes.
And Krista Schwintzer?
Yes.
Seven four.
Right. Next up, uh, thank you, Jessica. Next up, approval of the minutes of our October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
I move, we approve the minutes.
All right, uh, comments on the, the minutes, edits?
Well, I would like to, I'd like to comment that I think this is a very nice set of minutes. It really reflects what we did.
Great. Yep, typical great work, Jessica. Any, any edits? I'm, I'm hearing none. Uh, so Jessica, you're up to call the, I guess, the, the role on, on how awesome you are.
For the approval of the October minutes, Dave Thompson?
Approve.
Lisa Buck?
Yes.
Phil Ruck?
Yes, for me.
John Beckett?
Affirmative.
Judd McIntosh?
Approved.
Michael Costello?
Yes.
Krista Schwintzer?
Yes.
Seven four.
All right. Thank you again. Uh, old business. Next up, uh, we have a continued discussion and review of the planning board's bylaws. We, we've spent a couple of meetings on these, lot of good discussion. And after our last meeting, because of all the, the edits, the changes, uh, we asked Kyle to, to bring us a, a clean copy for our approval this evening. So Kyle, I'm gonna turn it over to you. I, I looked over quickly. We, we've got the underlying items, but if you could walk us through, uh, just so we can, uh, put this one to bed.
Sure. So, uh, I tried to address the, the few remaining edits. Uh, the first one would have been on page two, B four, uh, Krista brought up last time, this issue. So now it indicates the chairperson shall designate a member to fill in for the vice chair in the event that both of them are absent from the meeting. Uh, C right below that, uh, now indicates that the board, uh, shall designate a non-member as secretary. So all of the board members are off the hook now. But it's still, again, as we went over last time, it leaves it open, uh, so that while usually and most likely it'll be the, the secretary of community development, uh, that it could be someone else. Uh, and then the final edit was on, uh, the last page five G. Uh, and that is just language, uh, kind of indicating that the board has the option to advertise and publicize the public hearings in different locations, mainly the town's website. But then I kind of left it, uh, kind of open-ended digital media locations. You know, we use Facebook now, but who knows how that could change in the coming years. So, and I left it at May instead of shall, you know, if practices change, it's not a requirement by law or ordinance. So, um, I felt that gives us the option to keep doing what we're doing, but should something change for some reason, we can without changing the bylaws.
Very good.
The only other thing I'd mention is I have yet to speak with the town attorney about this. So I would say as far as a final vote of adoption, that we would wanna hold off on that. I had other topics that I needed to speak to the town attorney with that, instead of having multiple discussions, prefer to just reach out all at once. So, uh, as far as voting on adopting them, we can probably hold off. But if no one has any other edits, then I guess we can just table the discussion any further until, you know, we actually need to vote on it.
I, I do have a couple more edits.
Yep, that's fine, too.
Um, okay, um, as we fix these things, uh, suddenly something else becomes obvious. Uh, th- these are really quite minor. Um, on page one, membership, item D. The last sentence now says that, uh, that, um, after somebody has been removed from the board for not attending enough meetings, uh, that, um, the chairperson shall request the municipal officers to, um, fill the unexp- the expired, uh, what's left of the, um, term. And, uh, in B above, we had a change that to that the, um, senior member, a senior associate member would be the person who would fill an opening. And so I think we should make that consistent.
Sure. I think that makes.
Yeah, that's, that's a good catch, Krista.
Okay, so, um, and I have a suggested wording, but, um, Kyle, any wording that you like is, is fine. And that is starting the, that last sentence, just the way it starts. After a notification of the board of such fact, the position shall be filled as in section B above.
Like it.
Seems reasonable.
Okay.
Any, any issues on those two comments by Krista?
I, I'm sorry.
Okay, I've just, I just wanna, we'll clear this one. Uh, yeah, no, no comments there. We're, we're moving on. Okay.
If what we're talking about on the second part of the meeting tonight, would that change our public notice announcement? If we approve what we're going on to next, the signage?
See, I'm, I'm not with you.
The, the signage that we're talking about putting up on the next part of our meeting, out in front of the town hall, would that be a place to public, uh, notify a public meeting about a, a planning board meeting?
It could be, potentially.
Would that qualify as a public notice?
I think, you know, these things like the Facebook, you know, notice and on the website, those aren't required public notices, like nothing in the ordinance or state laws requiring that, um, just like it wouldn't be requiring it on the sign. I'm not sure since that doesn't exist yet. I'm not sure how the, the, you know, putting meetings up on some sort of rotation is going to work on the sign, but I could include some general language that would apply to things, including that sign.
I know, I, VZ has one. You've probably, you've probably all seen it now, and that's what they put up on theirs now.
Right.
Like, I, I do know, I, I've seen that the letters on the sign going down toward, uh, Ace Adams, that drive there, I've seen planning board announcements there. I'm not sure recently, but I, I think I recall driving by in the past and seeing an announcement, but we haven't put that in our bylaws or anything before, so.
We also post around town, like paper copies at the, well, when it's open in the town office and the library and IGA and the kiosk downtown. Um, you know, we post agendas there. That's not so much a public hearing, but I mean, it's essentially, you know, an advertisement for the, the meeting.
So, I guess.
Either way, it's fine with me.
Right. At Mike's point, if we just have a catch-all, I guess that, you know, that can, I mean, but I, I was, I was looking at that last edit that you referred to, Mike, on, uh, the bylaws for additional media. And I was wondering whether that, uh, electronic sign counts as digital media. Might cover them. Have we thoughts on that?
Oh, you're cutting in and out a little there, Phil.
I, I think he was talking about if that qualifies as digital media.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't know whether it really qualifies media is the issue, but, and I, you know.
Phil, your picture is frozen and your audio's, uh, coming in and out, so I don't know if you need to, uh, end it and rejoin or.
All right.
Oh, wait.
I'll, uh, I'll leave and rejoin.
Oh, it's that.
They typically recover.
Yeah.
Does this mean the vice chair is in charge right now?
It's, I'm stressed. Look at me.
And I don't know if the chair named the, uh.
There he is.
Thank God.
Yeah.
Uh, you're on mute, Phil. That's an easy one.
Yeah.
Give me the gavel.
Yeah, usually we have, uh, reasonable internet, but, uh, bandwidth, I guess, is challenged lately. Uh, again, my, my comment was whether, uh, the Mike's comment, it suffices that the digital media in that mention of that edit for page five, you know, that section G there, whether that's sufficient.
That really qualifies as media, is it?
Yeah, I wa- I wasn't sure. I just. Do it, do we feel that it's necessary to add the, the signage?
No, cuz I feel like that binds us. I mean, in twenty years, no one's gonna be looking at signs.
Okay. I, I think, how about we, we leave it as is? And Mike, with, with the understanding that, that, uh, the town is gonna take advantage of that new sign and probably post that. I, I think that's clearly another way we can reach people, uh, whether they pay attention or not, it is another matter. But, uh, you know, it, how, how about that? Does that, that sound okay?
Oh, that's fine. I just didn't wanna, uh, pass up a chance to make a change now while we were still there in case it was going, going to be requested down the, you know, you know, in a year or so.
Okay, Judd weighed in, I just, I guess, uh, what do others think? Wanna, wanna leave it as is, uh, modify it? I, I don't really care one way or the other, but.
I would say leave it as is.
Okay.
Because we can keep coming, new things can keep popping up and I, we can't put them all in.
Okay.
Leave it as is.
All right. So I, I, I think we've earned enough, uh, a good comment, Mike. Uh, you know, I think we'll encourage the town to use that, uh, option, obviously to get the word out, but we will leave it out of the bylaws for now. Krista, yeah, I think you had others. Is that correct?
Yeah, I have one more thing and it is quite small. Okay, just above where we were, item F. At the end, it says in paren, ended in a seventy-five. And of course, we've just amended it again. And I think the best thing to do there is not, is just to strike the amended and not put when it was amended. Because obviously these minutes have been amended at other times and the amendments aren't listed with the date.
Yep. No, uh, agreed. I was, yeah.
And there, there's another one of those too. It looks like under, uh, one, three, A also has an amended. And so does two A for that matter.
Two, yeah, there's a few of them throughout.
Yeah.
I was either going to, yeah, get rid of or update with the latest date. So I can just get rid of those if everyone is okay with that.
Yep. I, I do see. So to that point, is it just simpler? So if you look at page five, distribution of bylaws, and I, I don't know, there is an amended list that might be a little bit different topic, but there is a list of amendments, so maybe, as, as long as we have a mention, maybe that covers us or whether that's even necessary, I don't know.
Yeah, that list of amendments and the adoption date was already there, so I felt like it was kind of redundant to have both, but, yeah.
All right. I, I agree with Krista. I don't, I think, why don't we scratch all the amended dates in there? We'll keep it simple. I assume this document just overall would be dated anyways, Kyle, right?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, me.
And then the person could go to the minutes for that day if they really want.
That's what I'm thinking. If they, if they wanna look backwards, that, that's fine. All right. Good, good suggestions, Krista. We won't have to touch this for another thirty, forty years now. All right, uh, so there we go. We put a lot of effort in that. Uh, Krista made some, uh, good suggestions. So I guess it, we, are we, we should have a formal vote, Kyle, correct?
Uh, well, I think we can wait for the formal vote for adoption, so I'll make those few edits.
Passed by the attorney.
Yeah, I should be speaking then shortly, in the next week or so, uh, anyway.
All right. So we'll talk about, uh, what's, what's on the agendas coming up, uh, at the end of this meeting. But, yeah, if you just get back to us, so I think we've had lengthy discussion. So if we, if we're done with discussion next time, just as a formality, uh, we'll, we'll hear Kyle's review. If there's no changes, we can just vote on it, vote on it then. Does that sound reasonable? All right. Good. Uh, thank you, Kyle, for that. Uh, next up, we have new business. Uh, there's a discussion of a draft land use ordinance amendment to section eighteen dash one forty signs that would allow the town to operate an electronic sign in front of the town office and public safety building located along Main Street. And Mike already, uh, alluded to this before, but, uh, Kyle, could you give us a, a summary of, of what we're looking at today?
Sure. So this has actually gone a little out of order, uh, procedurally. Um, just because of the timing of everything, this is actually already had the public hearing at the council level. Hoping that it was such a small change that it, it wouldn't require any edits. Um, but, you know, we're doing the public hearing here, uh, you know, and if anyone has any, anything to add, then we can go from there. Um, but so the town received some grant funding through Keep Maine Healthy, um, and DHHS, uh, at the state level, um, for, uh, for, you know, related to the pandemic, for the use of a new sign. Uh, it would be a digital, you know, electronic type sign. An exact location, I don't think, was, uh, picked, but in general, it would be in front of the town office and public safety building, Main Street, around where the current sign is. The issue is that our sign ordinance does not allow for electronic and digital signs in general. So it wouldn't be allowable for the town to put up that sort of sign. Now, since this is sort of a kind of time-sensitive thing with getting the funding and getting the sign and putting it up in time, in discussions with other town staff, it didn't make a ton of sense to do a whole revision of the sign ordinance now, um, and kind of rush through it, because that's going to be a pretty lengthy conversation. I know that since I've been here, I've been hearing comments about how the sign ordinance needs to be rewritten. So at some point in the future, that's going to come up and things like allowing digital signs and other topics will, um, come up, I think, for, you know, more of the town, uh, not just isolated cases. Uh, but since that's such a kind of large process that would involve a lot of community outreach, aside from the public hearings, the town was hoping to get, uh, some sort of language added to the sign ordinance that would exempt them to allow, uh, the town to put up a digital sign in front of the, the town office, uh, in this case. Uh, so that's what, the way the sign ordinance is laid out is there's some standards at the beginning, and then it goes into a table that goes through the allowed sign types in each zoning district. As, you know, the area that the sign would go up in is in the village commercial. I added a footnote in, uh, for the village commercial. So, you know, all those standards would still apply to normal signs in the village commercial, you know, not having more than three hundred square feet of signage and, um, you know, the normal, uh, you know, opaque background lighting, not causing glare, things like that. Um, but it would also allow the town to operate this one sign out front. You know, there are some state guidelines, uh, reference there, twenty-three MRS, section nineteen fourteen, has some standards for changeable signs, uh, like they can't be rotated or changed more than, uh, every twenty minutes. So, but it does allow for towns to, uh, kind of get around that if they write it into their ordinance and then let the, uh, Department of Transportation know of that change. So that's what we tried to accomplish with that. Um, so that's pretty much it, uh, open to any discussion.
Right. Uh, anybody have any comments? Mike, uh, mentioned the VZ sign. Personally, I'm not a, not a huge fan of, of some, some of the digital signs, so I do, I'm hoping that, that council can, uh, do what they can do to perhaps keep it within character of the downtown. And I don't know, I'm not sure what that means, but.
There was some conversation about that at the council level, making sure that, I, it wasn't written into the ordinance, but I think it was clear in the intent from council and the town manager that this, everyone was hoping to do this in a tasteful way, not use, you know, flashing lights and bright colors and, you know, still keep it within reason. It was just a, a matter of making it easier for public health notifications, meetings and things like that.
Okay. Understood. Other comments, that was my two cents.
The, um, the, the footnote mentions that, uh, the changes could be more often than every, uh, twenty minutes, which seems to be the, the state standard. And I guess my only concern is that they not be too frequent, because I've encountered some signs that just drive me crazy. I, I see a sign like that and I feel like it's important. I should be able to read it, but I can't read it before it changes. And, uh, so I think, I hope that, you know, we keep track of that and not make the thing go too fast.
And you also don't wanna be a hazard to people driving by.
Good point.
Sign that they hit the person in front of them. Maybe that, I don't, that, I don't know, but maybe that a traffic engineer or somebody like that would have some comment on, on that kind of thing. I don't know, but.
Right. And that's really where the DOT, the state law is coming from with not, and you know, that's where our ordinance frankly is coming from with a sign shall, you know, number nine there, um, you know, language already in our ordinance about a sign not including moving parts or blinking lights. So I mean, that's speaking to the nuisance issue and the idea that it could be a distraction for people. So, um, I think while the exemption would allow the sign to have kind of a rotation going on to cycle through multiple events happening in the town or, you know, notices or things like that, uh, that to best meet the intent of the ordinance, it still wouldn't be, you know, flying through, causing, uh, you know, public safety issue for people on Main Street.
Other, other comments?
I, I can't imagine it would be any different than reading the signs going down the interstate at seventy-five miles an hour, the whimsical signs that they have, or any worse than the billboards that we grew up with as kids that we read going on our road trips. We wouldn't want it to be that way. That's for sure.
Yeah.
And speaking, you know, more to that, I would say the number eight, um, in the, the kind of list of standards there on page two talks about a sign or structure shall not be illuminated in any manner which causes undue distraction, confusion or hazard to vehicular pedestrian traffic. So I think regardless of this sign, you know, changing or rotating, transitioning to different pages, that standard would still apply. Um, so if it was causing a hazard to traffic or pedestrians, uh, then it would be in violation of the current ordinance language, I think.
Okay, thanks, Kyle. Uh, other comments?
Yeah, I would echo Phil what you said. I, I, I mean, I'm really not a fan of electronic signs. I ca- I grew up in the south and every little town is kind of like Vegas. And I guess one sign. But my real question would be, does this open us up now? Cuz I know some businesses wants, would love to put up a big flashy sign up. And I, I'm assuming that that doesn't, you know, the, the town being allowed to have one with this caveat doesn't then become kind of a, 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 an entry point to be like, well, now the, every restaurant and bar wants to have a big flashy sign with an arrow pointing and flashing.
Right.
To the door.
Good point.
So I can say that that was also discussed at the, I'm not sure if, I think it was at the, one of the council committee meetings when this was first brought up as a, a topic. And basically, the, the point that was discussed was that, uh, in the name of public health and safety and welfare, that the town is allowed to do certain things that don't necessarily apply to, um, everyone in town, businesses, residents, things like that. And that the, the goal of this sign would be so that the town can better inform people in town. It wouldn't be for any kind of, uh, you know, extra, you know, luxury reason um, other than really conveying, you know, information that the town would want people to see. So that, yeah, it wouldn't, this wouldn't necessarily set a precedent that, okay, now everyone can operate a, a digital sign in town. Um, and that's why that would be part of the larger sign ordinance overhaul discussion, uh, later down the line.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know technically it wouldn't set a precedent, cuz it's clearly defined. It's only the town. I just didn't know if it would. But, yep, okay, I'm good.
Great, great catch though, Judd, and I, I would imagine there'd be some lively discussion, uh, when, when the, a larger ordinance comes be, before us. Cuz at, at that point, Kyle, I just wanna be clear that that would start with us, not, not this, uh, reverse process.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that would be a, a lengthier, um, conversation.
Right. Cuz as you said, this started in committee and came to us, but I was, would assume like normal that, uh, we, we would be addressing ordinances and then pass that on to council, so.
Right. So most, most ordinances, they'll start in council committee.
Right.
Get recommended to planning board and then go to council for the public hearing. Yeah, the way this one fell. the notice of the planning board and council meeting, it ended up getting put on a council meeting first, however, if the board had, you know, an issue with the language, then you know, it could obviously still be changed, it hasn't been adopted yet, and it would have to go back through the council public hearing process.
So, I wanna be clear, I, Judd's points were, were great, and I think we'll have another opportunity to discuss this from a, a whole town perspective, but are, are people okay with the, the town alone at this point, given Kyle's language? Are, are we okay with, with this one option? All right, I see, I see a lot of thumbs. I guess further discussion?
We don't wanna be the town that doesn't have a sign, if everybody in the whole state.
Everybody else is doing it, yeah. All right, uh, so, and they are passing this, our recommendation on, so, I guess I'll take a motion if, if we're ready for that.
I move that we approve the recommended change to the Orno Code of Ordinances, the standards for signs, section 18 dash 140. Do I need to read the actual?
No, they're just, you know, yeah, just the amendment proposed would be sufficient, but.
I'll second.
Very good, further discussion? All right, Jessica, you're up again.
All right, so this is for the recommendation of the sign ordinance. Give me just one sec here, Dave Thompson?
Proactive.
Lisa Buck?
Yes.
Michael Costello?
Yes.
John Beckett?
Yes.
Krista Swenson?
Yes.
Judd McIntosh?
Yes.
And Phil Rock?
Yes, for me.
That's seven four, the approval of the recommendation.
Very good, thank you again, Jessica. Other new business, there's none. Next up, discussion, Kyle, could you give us a heads up on, on what December looks like, and, you know, possibly after that?
Sure, so, I guess a few weeks ago, the RSU came forward with an application for an accessory structure, a storage shed, in sort of back of the school, by the fields. That was something that needed to be done after the fact, with after the fact approval by the planning board, you know, spoke with a lot of town staff and Phil. So that is something that would be ready to be reviewed in December. It was the reason for the after the fact approval was due to them getting, similar to the sign, getting grant funding for COVID-related activities, and so they had to kind of get their permit in and start constructing that in a kind of timely manner. So that's something that could be reviewed in December, that's the only official thing that has all of their application materials in and ready. I guess the bylaws are still a little bit there, and there's a couple other things that may be ready for December but have not officially applied yet, so, with that being said, it's really just the bylaws and, and after the fact review at this point, so, Phil, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, I, I spoke with Kyle, so I wanna address the, the first item, he and I spoke, and we talked about what RSU proposed, and I thought it was gonna be on the agenda this evening, but it was not, so my big concern for this one, and Kyle and I walked through the project, but it is after the fact, and I, and I mentioned to him, I do not want this to be obviously standard practice or set any precedent, I, I mean, I, that's not something that I don't think is a, a good, good habit to get into, is approving that, oh, because of grant funding and coming to us. It was, it's, when you review that, I, I think you see it's a relatively minor issue, they, I guess, replaced an existing building, put up another one. So, again, pretty small, but again, I, I don't, that's not good practice to do a lot of after the fact stuff, so this has been an odd year with a pandemic, and Kyle just mentioned the funding, so that, that's the way that is, but I, I made my point known when, when we chatted about that, I did talk to Kyle this afternoon, and, and we talked about the, the bylaws, well, I was thinking we, we might wrap that up tonight, but right now, we just have a vote on that, and then an after the fact permit, so my, my question to him was, if we don't get anything else for December, I, I'd be more inclined to, to give this board a night off, because you know, it, it, that's pretty light, i- i- as far as I, I can see, and I, I thought it'd be nice to perhaps push that back to, to January, I, I didn't imagine I'd get too much of a fight from, from the rest of the board members, but, uh, you know, that, that, that was my opinion, so, I guess, unless anybody has real concerns or wants to meet in December, if, if nothing else comes in, are, are we okay with pushing those two hot topics till January? Can I have a thumbs up? All right. So I guess, that being said, you know, we, we might be moving or seeing each other in a, in a January meeting, so, next up, I have adjournment?
Don't move.
All right.
All right.
I, I, Lisa was quick, Dave, Dave was quick on the, the second I heard, so, any further discussion? Hearing none, Jessica, one last time.
All right, for adjournments of the November meeting, Dave Thompson?
Uh, let, let me think, yeah, yes, I can.
Lisa Buck?
Nice.
Michael Costello?
Yes.
John Beckett?
Yes.
Krista Swenson?
Yes.
Judd McIntosh?
Yes.
Good to think about that. Yes, for me, thanks, everybody, again, a light meeting, but it was good to get these, these items moved along, and I hope all of you have a, a great Thanksgiving, and good holiday season in, in December, and I hope to see you all in, in January.
Thank you, Phil.